And in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal years.
You have two separate items, the two page one is the file for our July sixteen this three year exception of our planning services and elections department regularly cover at one special department. And then we have one page for the recovery. We're going to give my questions on that one.
Carrie, I do have a question on the one pager, the recoveries, the revenue recoveries, can you help, Judge, what that is?
Yes, back in twenty ten, the county participated in the branch bridge project, and this is a refund of some of those.
And it's just going into general industry?
Contingencies where we put mail.
Okay. And then the second item for IT capital L.
Yes, because I was were budgeted under capital equipment, but they actually fall on more smaller ones, so they went into, I think, that was just for just.
Okay, thank you.
We approve the management for the twenty fifteen sixteen of the year and also the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year.
Second.
Have a motion in second on favor, Judge. Doctor's, consider and act upon the approval of the annual doctors process by the county office for the period of, reminder, twenty sixteen to November eight, twenty sixteen. Check numbers one seven one nine nine four three one seven two two four nine, wire rates for a check from eight through eight point eight, payment amount of two million six hundred and seventy five thousand nine hundred and forty one dollars to the number six. So any questions?
We approve the doctor's asking.
Second for discussion, two questions, Judge. And Sheriff, this may be a question for you, page seven of thirty, check number one seven two zero four six, Baylor County, in Maquisi, I didn't know if this was a new county that we had an agreement with. Typically, we just see Childers County.
I know we had one that was housed for us, and I guess like, we had ten days to pick them up, and they transferred that person to, like we do children, we have too many, and they transfer them to another county, that would be the only thing that I can think of.
Second question, page fourteen of thirty, check number one seven two one four one, Crossshow Technologies, professional design employees, Carrie, I'm not sure what that is for, notes slated to the Sheriff Department, I don't know if it's a law enforcement project?
It is, it's called services they provide.
Do you know on what they were consulting?
Well, this is for the security, the video.
It's for the camera systems and the key cards? Okay, of the new building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Have a motion in the second on favor, Judge. In search report, okay, you have anything on that? Nobody here has anything, and you want to come on over? Okay, so, so recognize the number four, number five, compensatory time to hear a report on compensatory time, take any action necessary. Good morning.
Good morning. You should have in your packets a handout related to the compensatory time reports for this quarter, as instructed from last quarter, this report is more a summary as opposed to detail. I will say right up front that that detailed information is available on request, if you would like it, I'll be happy to send a list of all of those details to you. This quarter, our compensatory time report identified, actually, there were two additional employees that were reported after the packet was provided for the agenda, there were a couple of nine employees that were identified from three departments. Two of the three departments were identified as elected officials, and I did provide an email notification to all of those affected department heads and elected officials, listing the employees within their areas that were at for about a hundred hours, and immediately received response from two of the three department heads and elected officials, I believe the third was out field, and so I did not receive an immediate response from them, but I'm quite sure that those hours are being taken care of. Both of the responding department heads and elected officials indicated that they have already taken steps to reduce those hours, that the time off had already been scheduled or was being arranged. One of the departments was elections, and of course, their hours are affected greatly by this last election, and as you will recall from a few courts previously, that Malina has made arrangements for part of those overtime hours to be reimbursed by the city and Bishopland Independent School District, and so those affected hours will be paid and reimbursed by those entities, so that will reduce those hours as well. Again, details, information is available on the request, I'll be happy to provide it, and we are scheduled to do the next home time report of the last commissioners' court in February.
Thanks for coming to stay on top of there, it really helps itself.
Well, we, like I say, we got a very favorable response from all of the affected officials.
He did about seven points.
We have made great strides in this area.
Thank you.
I would like to mention just one sidebar, and I won't go into any details, I just want to let you know that last week was a very interesting week in the HR world. Through the end of the week last week, or just prior to the holiday, we had three significant announcements that were made, and I will prepare at date for next commissioners' court and gather all of the details on those, and bring them forward today. They affected things such as the FLSA rule that earned much attention during our budget cycle, that was slated to become effective on December first. Also, the ever popular ten ninety-five forms were affected, as well as a new I'm form is now, has just been made available, and is a smart form, and will be required for usage by January twenty second, but I'll provide a date next commissioners' court on that.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Okay, number six, treasure reports, recognizing treasure report. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, as you know, this time of year, we have, seems like, a lot more expenditures from our end of year and beginning year, so this morning, our Amal National Bank checking account, we have five million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-eight cents. In Texas class, I have four million, forty-six dollars, one hundred, I mean, forty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and eleven cents. Tex prime, I have three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and sixty-six cents. And Tex pool, we have fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. And then in Cedars, the year Cedars, we still have the five million. That brings our total of our cash in our general fund this morning to fifteen million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents. Our A and B rate this morning is point eighty-three, Texas class is eighty-four, Tex pool prime is seventy-seven, and Tex pool is forty. So we're still doing well, within the next few weeks, we'll become our tax season, and we'll get very busy and start reinvesting and finding areas that's safe and good for money.
Thank you, once again.
Thank you.
All right, number seven, text op agreement to contribute right-of-way funds, to consider and act upon agreement with text op for ten percent participation in portion of the loop three thirty-five four oh, that involves Potter County, ten percent amount is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and can be paid out in forty payments for the next four years. Is this about you and text op? I had a meeting with him, we've had several meetings with him, but this was the last meeting where they actually brought the, that it'd be asked to pay. This is for, if you look on the screen, this is for the loop, the part is B two, which starts way Randall County, so I came back and then we're still on the pay, and then we picked it up at I forty, and it goes up through Nine Street, the one little bit. And so we've been actually paying one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and we've got to pay forty payments in the next four years, forty-seven thousand some odd cents.
So Judge, the amount presented is the cumulative amount for the whole project?
For the whole project.
Per year?
Okay.
For the whole project. But we didn't have this in our current budget, correct?
No, not. I was asked to budget that, and they not heard that they weren't going to do it, so I took it out, and now they said, oh, yeah, we're going to do it, so we're getting the money from.
Contingency.
The officials.
And you're only requesting that first year amount to come out of contingencies?
Right, forty-seven thousand.
The education, when they finish the northwest project.
They didn't go that far, they are going to finish the loop from I forty out, and then Hollywood Road, they're going to finish all of that.
But that's always southwest, southeast, and Randall County, you still have quite a bit of two lane road there, northwest.
Well, as you know, text op is affecting some of the funding away, so they're going to do as much as they can with what they have.
Okay, and northwest is always going to be.
Yeah, unfortunately, and it's needed, just as much out there it is everywhere else. They're just going to finish that one part, so.
Judges, this city participating as well?
And you mentioned Randall County? Yeah, Randall County City is participating.
Okay. Do you know their cost share? I know our agreement shows ten percent.
I don't, I don't know theirs.
It is usually a standard of ten percent for.
And via this agreement indicates that without the local match, this project will not happen, if I read that correctly?
That's correct.
This is a definite amount. I move that, we approve the agreement of text op for ten percent participation in the R County portion of loop three thirty-five four oh.
Just, does the motion need to include which account, Carrie?
And you want to pay twenty-five percent out of this this year?
Yep, out of.
Second? Okay, have a motion in second or favor, Judge. Thank you very much. And number eight, acceptance of donations, consider and act upon accepting the donation to the county of a parking lot that's something sporting Pierce from Harrow Bane, and if accepted, authorizing the use of county resources to scrub the parking lot. I got a phone call from Rob Parker at Harrow Bane, he knows we're having difficulty with parking, he said, look, we have a lot that we don't use, if you want to use that until the parking garage is done, it's twenty-five spaces, you can have it. So, I talked to Mr. Dickerson at that location, and he said, yes, you can have it, I talked to Nick, and Nick said, is Nick here, Nick's there, and Nick said, he went and looked at it, and Judge, one of our district judges, said, well, let's strip it, just as a token of good faith to them, to thank them for letting us have this, and they went and looked at it, and it's not strivable, and so, Nick come and tell us why.
So Judge, they're only offering to allow us to use?
Yeah.
The property, not donate?
Not yet, I just want to donate it until the parking garage is ready.
Okay.
Just to avoid some problems.
Where the building used to sit, the wall, I guess is what it was, they used for temporary, it's concrete in the shape of a nail, and behind it is a small portion of asphalt that they parked their employees, but in front of that was crushed asphalt, where whenever you turn the wheels on, it just pills up, and there's no way to strip it, it's just like the parking lot we have at J V three, the only place that we could strip would be the concrete area, and it's in the shape of a nail, so.
Are there, are there parking?
There are some parking blocks in the backside where the employees used to park, but the other parking blocks are kind of like rotten in the middle of the lot because of where the building was set, they put parking blocks for handicapped people, they park right next to the building, so, kind of have these random parking lots there in the middle of the lot.
Think they'd not pay before we, before we service it.
But it would have to be resurfaced.
If we were going to strip it, so, if we don't strip it, well, we're just being havoc, we're going to strip the parker, or will someone actually figure it out?
Like I say, the parking blocks is kind of rotten, there's only one way in and one way out, so, if there's not necessarily a directional flow to tell the people how to go in and how to come out, it, yeah, it could kind of be electric, because on the Pierce Street side, there's a curb, the only place that there is an entry is there at the alleyway of Fourth Street, so, so how long will he, does it be in?
Whenever we're working.
Twenty seventeen?
So it's a short term, but the district judges were ecstatic, they were really happy about this, because they're going to, they're going to go through the building, and give so many people that those specific places to park, which would be a significant part of the.
Yeah, I have no idea.
I'll leave it to the district judges to figure it out, sorry. Thanks.
Okay, I'll give you a couple options. Well, I guess I have a question, if we're taking action, Judge, I mean, are we, are we imposing any risks on the vehicles if there's loose gravel and?
I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think so, the only reason this is on the agenda was because Scott and I visited about it, the only way we can strip it is if we accept it as a donation, so we don't, we're not going to strip it, so we really don't have to do it.
And just for, for justification, assuming it's basically loose gravel, the Torque Claims Act waves immunity from the county for property damage claims, but only those caused directly by motor-driven equipment, so the condition of the parking lot really wouldn't open up liability claims, I mean, if you wanted to, I suppose you'd put a sign up that said, you're parking here, it's your own risk, to make that clear, but in legal effect, there's not going to be much.
But since we're not striping, do we need formal action? I'm hearing that no, you do not.
I mean, the court can go ahead and accept the temporary donation, and that's probably the correct vehicle about it, beyond that, you're just going to accept the temporary donation.
So we do need, so we do need to.
Yeah, I would, I think that's a problem, I think if we're going to be using it, then yeah, we probably.
Okay.
No, you shouldn't park them out of, is that what you said?
Okay. All right, I have a motion in second on favor, Judge. Four one. Okay, number nine, Water Canyon Royal Stadium, do you hear an update of the status of the previous to the baseball stadium?
So I will take this as an initial introduction, certainly Judge, chime in, I know we're working together on this item. Mr. Ellison was notified after the last commissioners' court, we passed the lease agreement, a just that we had on the table, so a lot of questions as it related to the improvements and any documentation for the contract year that just finished, so I had a conversation with him via phone, extended the invitation to be present at commissioners' court.
Gary Ellison is?
Uh, Gary Ellison is the leaseholder, has been in contract with Southern Independent, who is who we have a contract with for the leaseable stadium, so he is looking at his calendar to possibly attend the December twelfth, this court was a little difficult after a holiday, so that invitation is still on the table for him, so I wanted to just communicate that to the full court, that we did provide that to him. As a follow-up, from the last commissioners' court, they did provide some documentation, typically what they do around this time every year, they provide that documentation, there's a small committee that meets, myself, Commissioner Kelly, Carrie, Mike, I think Scott has participated in the past, or Dave at the time, and we go through all the documentation, and we say, is this maintenance, or are these improvements, because the contract specifically calls for improvements. Anything that there is gray area or could be discerned either way, comes to the full court to discern that. So we got that documentation last week, we're going to meet after commissioners' court today, to hopefully have an update for you of what we are recommending needs, kind of the improvements via the contract. So we did get that documentation, what has also happened in the interim, and this is not an agenda item, but I just want to make sure everybody is aware, you should have got via email a copy of another lease agreement from San Jacinto Christian Academy, and I think we have a representative in the audience today, this is not slated for formal action, but we should have two lease agreements, one with Pegas, one with San Jacinto, and then the final documentation on where we are with the improvements, hopefully slated for the next commissioners' court on the twelfth, and in my deal world, Mr. Ellison will be present to help kind of with that documentation and clarification for any questions.
Okay, so in the meantime, Mr. Ellison has talked to Ted Bowles from San Jacinto, correct?
Correct.
And you sent this, this sublease to you, and you've reviewed it?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to speak on that just first? Or are you, you're looking at me like, don't have a.
You know me too well.
I just want to know, what is your personal opinion on, I mean, what ifs, what ifs, what if, what if the, if they don't?
This is a question.
Yeah, just, just very well, what is your timeline for you to start playing baseball?
We'd like to start January first, is when we would like to take, you know, some responsibility for the field, and before, I mean, we would like to have had some action before this so that we can start some preparations to, I mean, to start any preparations to the field, because the field, anything that is done at this point, if I have an opinion, is an improvement, because the field is, and the playing condition is in such bad shape, so, we've got a lot of work to do to get it playable for, and to be able to practice on that field and make it safe for our, for our kids, so, as soon as Mr. Ellison and I can hammer out a few more details, we've got a little bit left, I think we'll have something to present in the next meeting.
So time is very, very.
Time is very important in this juncture, we've got a lot to do.
And one thing, Judge, the deadline for the agenda items was earlier last week because of the holiday, so when we got the lease agreement, it was after the deadline of when the agenda went out, so just a little bit of kind of sequence of the timeline of how that worked, but certainly being sensitive to, to, ready to start potentially in the January timeline.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay then, so let us, we will assume that we will meet with Mr. Ellison, I'll look on the next meeting. And I have, I noticed my filter is here from Florida, so it's in, they're associated with the San Jacinto, did you want to say anything, Mike, or you want to explain until we, until we do something?
I had my own impression of court, so.
You don't have to if you don't want to.
Okay, I don't mind, it looks like I'm shedding, I took my dog to the vet this year. Unfortunately, my dog has the same color hair I do. I have a conversation to represent the athletes, I suppose represent sport, we would appreciate the season as quickly as possible, because we do have to start in January, our schedule runs from January to about the middle of May, and then we're through, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and if you have been there, you, you know, and we have to kind of assemble a small army of volunteers and athletes to be able to do this work, and be able to start practicing by January, about the middle of January, our season actually starts first games of the last of February, so our window is getting very short to be able to make improvements, to make the field playable, so, we appreciate all haste. Okay, so, so are we meeting with Mr. Ellison prior to the commissioners' court?
We were not planning on doing that unless you've requested to do that, what we'd like to do by the next commissioners' court is have a firm.
I don't think we as a court, we as the committee.
Right, yeah, we were not originally planning to do that, I think the open questions for Mr. Ellison are the improvements in the contract, there's one more year on his contractual agreement with Potter County, that's the year we are now in and entering into, so we're trying to close the books for last year, I don't know of any other open questions other than the improvements.
The only contract, I'm listening to.
Is September twenty seventeen, and the commissioners' court has the approval, or has, I'm trying to think of the language that's in there, we have the ability to extend it as we see fit, September twenty seventeen is when the contract ends.
And as far as the crunch time of getting this in playing shape, certainly very good at the time, Mike, you're going to be a, you're a part of that, I assume, as far as that.
Yeah, we're going to split, Mike, we've got three different people.
One thing that we did last night, we addressed the same situation, was you can kind of work with us, give us a list of what you anticipate on doing to the field, if you want to tear this out, if you're regrating, whatever, that way, at least we have an idea of what's going to be done after.
So when you.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like just, no, I have anything to do with you. My question is about our current, our current lease with Mr. Ellison, it's my understanding, correct if I'm wrong, that he was supposed to work with us through, through Mike on any improvements that we made, and yet, we're still now trying to find out what improvements they did make, evidently, they did not work too much, is that right?
What you want to, every year?
I, I don't know, it's very frustrating to me that we continue with this contract with this guy who has no interest in it, and did everything he could to keep baseball theirs.
You're in line with us, committee, where you wouldn't dispel some of his, exactly where the intentions, why didn't know the committee itself was going to be good, I have to get, to get some of those questions.
Well, that's, that's what I asked him to be prepared to speak to the full court on, on the twelfth, is what is the plan for this final year in the contract, what are the intentions with baseball, those kind of things, so to address the full court and give that information, similar to what he did last year, we were in a very similar season, with the general manager had changed again, we weren't sure what would happen in the baseball stadium, so I would agree, Commissioner Church, that this is something we continue to deal with every year.
I'd like to ask, Lee, what can we do to get Mr. Ellison out of this contract and redo some?
He's given every indication that he would like to be out of the contract.
What has to be done for that to happen?
He's been from the contract, and that's the question for the court is, he's subleasing under the contract, that's the next best thing for him for getting out of it, because under sublease, he remains responsible for his commitments. If we call Mr. Ellison and said, hey, would you like out of this contract, and he said, yes, I'm going to get this contract.
Really, you think that, Judge?
Sure.
Who would be responsible for his, for the else?
Well, we, we don't have any, we don't have any say so, because between the other third.
Vendors, yeah.
I'm pretty confident that he would be happy to walk away, the question would be, did you work with him, or leave his obligations?
So that would be news to me, only because every conversation he and I have had, and we've, you know, maybe had a handful over this past year, he has never indicated, I mean, he has always indicated that to me, that he intends to fulfill the contract, and has said it just like that.
That's, that's what I took off, so.
Yeah.
I'm not.
But we can currently, I mean.
Well, that's horrible, and I intend.
It's a lawyer.
I'm glad you said that.
Realizing, to me, you guys get.
Yeah, we can do that.
The quickest way to find out is for me to call. The quickest way to find out is for me to call the...
Yeah.
But ultimately he, he presays his obligations to...
Well, that's what he would like to be relieved of, I said.
I'm not wrong to relieve him of his obligations.
I can't speak for him, but I'm just reading between...
Okay. We can certainly take that as a to-do question.
So first meeting in December, which is the 12th.
Yes, ma'am.
You guys want to come back?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll talk about that then. Uh, number two, you have the parking lot, that's going forward, okay? So, uh, no, we need to give an update to the... Parking lot improvement, but we have a meeting, so we don't... That's why we have a meeting, because we have not spoken to them yet. We have to discuss information regarding Dick Vivins studying property renovations.
Okay. Yeah, okay. All right. So, um, we have been meeting, Judge Tanner and I have been meeting via interest from A I S D. Regarding some shared parking lots at the Tri-State Fairgrounds. This is a topic that certainly under my review has been going on at least five years. And Commissioner Vaughn is the most tenured, you probably have even more background on this. This particular property structure, the, the lease of that is very unique in and of itself. Potter County sits in the middle and we actually leased those parking lots, and I'll look at Scott and Pat to keep you honest here. We leased those parking lots to A I S D and to Tri-State Fairgrounds. One of those lease agreements are roughly forty years old, one is in the thirty-year range. So they are very long-term lease agreements. Um, Potter County has ownership of that entire footprint. And we leased that fairground space to the fairgrounds for a year. Dick Vivins is owned by the school district as well as a small slab of land north, which is often called the Emerald High Football Practice Field is how I hear it referred to often, or the Tree Farm. Mm-hmm. Yes, northwest, um, section of that property. So A I S D is, uh, at the table, trying to look at all the entities to see what it would take for us to roughly redo those parking lots. And when we say redo, um, the discussion on the table is not just high-level asphalt, and I'll look at Sebastian, keep all my words honest here. This is not my expertise, but really, um, I call it gutting it, getting down to the core, uh, so not just the surface level. Also what's on the table is potential lighting. Obviously, there are some security concerns out there if you're ever in that property when it's late at night, whether it's a football game or the fair or whatever it is you're doing on that property. So, um, the dollar amount that is being kind of thrown around at a high level, A I S D took as a to-do, they had their team look at what it would take to redo the parking on the north and the south side, to be very specific. Um, and they also did a core sample to actually look at the infrastructure underneath it. So we, so the estimate on it wasn't just an eye view of this is what it'll take to, to have done. Sebastian has also helped us and Sebastian has gone to take a look and wer, work with A I S D to see if the county could participate, how much could we participate and what could that look like? One of the things that Judge Tanner and I have as a to-do, we also, um, will get a meeting on the calendar to go visit with Tri-State Fair and say, these are all the entities that use that property and how can everyone kind of cost share to help bring that parking lot up to par? And so we have that slated as a to-do, to visit with the fairgrounds. Um, this will not be a new topic to them. They know that we've been kind of vetting on this. So the reason this is on the agenda, this is not to take formal action, but it is to kind of bring everybody up to speed with some of those discussions that have been had. Um, years ago, this was the county, uh, if I remember correctly. Commissioner Vaughn, he'd be on this now in this history, but years ago, this was the county going to the entity saying, everybody that uses this, come together, help, help pay for this. Um, now A I S D was at the table to say, how can we improve this parking? This was an agenda item for their, um, their board this past Monday before the holiday. So this agenda item was also discussed there to bring everybody up to speed. Um, roughly, they're looking at about one and a half million per entity. So that would be A I S D, Potter County, and, um, Tri-State Fair. Now, one thing...
The question, the, the, uh, question, uh, developed in, uh, in the history of this, then, uh, Potter County basically have been a good neighbor.
Yes.
Basically to all these. We don't have a revenue stream in this process. So we're gonna be, uh, for an entity of, uh, how much a billion, uh, in the... What are we going to bring from this other than continuing to be that good neighbor?
A hundred percent agreeing, and that is what we said in the meeting. Uh, what I indicated to the committee at the time, and, and Judge Tanner certainly, you know, let me know your perspective as well. But we indicated, we are very much that, we are the neutral body that everybody obviously plays nice for that structure. It does both entities well, the fact that they have Potter County in the middle, um, and that we are, have these lease agreements out there. And so all of them can use the parking as they see fit, and obviously we've used the parking on the baseball stadium. What I shared with them was that same concern and said, we don't have a revenue stream. The taxpayers are not getting any dollars off of this property. What we typically do is we typically do kind of in-kind work. And there might be something we might be able to do like haul off the, um, the old material or stripe or whatever that may be. So Sebastian, and certainly thank you to Sebastian, um, publicly thank him, went out, took a look at it and said, if we participated, this is what we could do. And roughly that dollar amount was about three hundred thousand dollars of what we could do in terms of our manpower, our labor, our equipment, those kind of things, instead of actually dragging the check. Uh, I said, this is probably what I feel like the court will say, because we don't have a revenue stream. And we don't, we're not, we don't have any skin in the game other than we are being a good neighbor for that. So the committee, um, asked me and Judge Tanner to bring this to the full court for that input. But exactly what you said, Commissioner Vaughn, is what we said in that committee meeting. And our job was to make the full court aware. I'm hearing that you have similar sentiments than what we did in that meeting. And so one of our to-dos will be to communicate that back unless I hear any different. Um, that's exactly what we said the court's opinion would be, we thought the court's opinion would be. But we wanted to bring it to the full body, hear it from each one of you gentlemen, so that we can communicate and say the court agrees.
And, and that also as an added to the, uh, what are our county's long-term...
Well, that's a good question.
...in respect to that, uh, that needs to be answered by the court prior to any of this, because what are, I, what are our...
Well, I'll tell you, obviously that property is in my precinct, so I spend a lot of time on that property. And that property has gotten a lot of attention, especially with whatever the future of baseball is in Amarillo. So there's been a lot of, um, I might call it a little bit of a holding pattern because of whatever the future was with the downtown stadium. And if it truly did get built, and who would the team be to go in there, et cetera. So a lot of those decisions would obviously kind of drive our baseball stadium future, whatever that looks like. Now, there's no big surprise, I've shared with each one of you at this court level. The footprint of that whole property is very unique and very prime for a potential future. And the fact that Potter County owns the parking, which is the most valuable piece of development, and we own that, that gives us a lot of flexibility for whatever that future's supposed to be. Um, I'm, for Mike, I, often I, I have, you know, questions and we go look at the property. So we are doing some thinking on that, Commissioner, and we don't really have a strategic kind of land use plan. That's the truth of probably what we need. Um, I have looked at some original renderings even of what that property was just this morning. It's down in records, uh, management, and there's, there's a rendering for the property back in nineteen twenty-five and nineteen forty, and so it's actually very interesting to see what the thinking was at that time and where we are. So I can tell you there are, we are trying to be diligent about it, but I don't have an answer to that yet.
Before we commit our road and bridge department to do things, we need to consider what it costs. We're taking them away from what they're supposed to do, keep our roads up to, up to snout, or so. I hate to see us commit the road department to a project, just because, just because...
We're really committed to timeframe, aren't we?
Not yet, no, and we have not committed, there's been no formal action. It was really of, if we did something, what could that dollar amount be? But we don't have a timeline, um, ob, ob, obviously the, the parking lots need to get repaired. I mean, that's, that's the truth of what's on the table and how the chips fall and where the dollars come from is really where the difficult decisions are.
Well, I would be encouraged maybe to pull out from this, the whole plan, to find out what's going to happen. Given a year or so, you know, it's...
Well, would you be opposed, Commissioner Kelly? One of our to-dos was to go back and visit with the fairgrounds and see their interest. In an ideal world, if both of the entities that use the property came together to redo it, that would be an ideal world. Um, so we would still like to take that as a to-do and offer it, put it on the table for the fairgrounds and kind of have that discussion.
These are expressed on the, we don't have any revenue... Something that needs to be...
That's, that's been discussed before.
Yeah.
And I think there was a legislative vote, uh, A I S D were not able to share of this, they own it outright. I've been funding those discussions with the...
Yeah, and, um, I agree with you, that was one of the questions. There was a Senate Bill eight-ten that was sponsored last late legislative session by Senator Seliger that authorized the school to, um, allocate dollars to the city. The municipality, I think is the word that's used in the actual law that references city government and not county. So I have been advocating with Senator Seliger to get that updated, get that revised this session to at least include the county. Uh, not that we need it immediately, but we might as well as we're going into the legislative session, uh, to include the county in that description. And in particular, because that structure is so unique and that history of the ownership does go back into the twenties and thirties, which, believe it or not, is almost a hundred years...
That's when you were just a baby.
I knew she was gonna say something about that. So there's, um, and, and it is, I think you will find very interesting, Commissioner Vaughn, I didn't realize this until today, when I was looking at some of the original plans, someone, I'm not sure who that was, this was probably a nineteen forty drawing, um, the actual plan, someone with a right, a red pen wrote, who owned what? It said Potter County, A I S D, fairgrounds, it was, it, someone was thinking about that even then. So, more to come, Judge Tanner and I didn't even...
I know, but, but I have also talked to, like, Senator Seliger. And I'll keep my opinion to myself when we're on the back of it.
Is there, um, any, anything that I missed on that committee update? Because we wanted to make sure you were aware, that's why there's not an action item, this is just to be discussed. I don't want any of that to catch any, any one of the spice of...
Well, that's the person of the court, who says when that committee is due and Commissioner...
Uh, Judge Tanner and Scott.
Scott.
Judge Tanner and I.
Okay. Number eleven, seventh quarter appeals to consider an act upon proposal to Architectus for fees on renovation construction projects in Great Village and... This is our next phase, uh, to give the architect, consider an act upon a contract, um, to his, uh, Larry Erzick, who's actually here from Architectus to get us some costs together. He met with, uh, Big in Long and, um, Lee Sheefler, and Justice Quinn was here.
I'm here.
Here.
He's here.
There he is. Um, if he, uh, can speak on behalf of Get Together, and like I said, this is the next approval purchasing needs to be in touch with Architectus. So, you okay to, uh, hear from Larry?
Sure.
Good morning. Good, well, um, I think you guys all have a copy of the microphone. Uh, what I've put together here is a single trip to do some programming, field measuring, photography in space. I'm generally familiar with the form of this, then, just to... Now I need to become more familiar with the space, and understand what the user's really about to do with the space. I do have a general knowledge, um, of living, walking through the space and what they're looking for. Um, but I'd really like to meet with other staff members and judges also, whoever, they would like stakeholders to get together. Um, I have a P in there, actually the initial visit for doing schematic design through construction drawings, bidding, and then construction administration. Um, what I've assumed on that is that we're gonna build a word this in on my other site visits that I have here for the Department Handoff Forcement Center. So I don't have any trouble to have a duty for that. I think that's very doable. Uh, the last item of the compensation is if, you know, there is a request for some individual site visits, there's a charge for each one of those site visits, but I'm hopeful that we don't have to move into that.
I wanna make sure that, um, the budget is by Justin Quinn's, and there is, so that would be... And this is in the amount allowed in that budget? I'm assuming, I, I don't know the dollar amount of there, but it's a bunch of...
Thank you, good morning, and warm up for today. And I like that we have the same business. Yes, good question, Commissioner. Um, we have, probably, we have probably over a thousand dollars for this. I did not see this, I did not get a copy of this before, until, uh, really last week. Then Thanksgiving break came around and I had to talk to the other judges on the court about this. Uh, of course, uh, even though I'm the chief, I'm, I'm just head go-cutter, so to speak. Uh, they all have a site in this. So conceptually it is, but... Of course, I haven't talked with the architect yet. And, uh, depending, I have no idea of what the estimate is gonna be for the construction itself. So I was hoping to talk with the architect before, then he could give me a guess for that, and then we can go proceed forward. So, conceptually, yes, certainly, I don't know.
Is there urgency that you feel like we need to take action on this today? Or should we table that for those valid concerns and bring this back in early December?
No, I don't see an urgency, in fact, I'm a little surprised with this, really. I'm, I welcome you jumping up on this and moving forward on this, uh, no doubt. But, uh, I did not expect this to be done so fast. Uh, and it took me a little bit less surprise to...
So how much time do you think you will need to visit with Larry and the other judges to bring this back?
We can probably talk, uh, talk before your next meeting. I understand the next meeting is December twelve, so that's two weeks. That's okay.
Just fine. Larry, I do have a question, if I may, on the compensation side. This is always a piece that I always find as a conflict of interest, and I don't know if this is typical, um, for construction projects. You would think we would be somewhat savvy as much work as, as we have done, certainly with Architectus. But the twelve percent of construction cost, uh, I always feel like that is a little bit of a conflict because as a, as an outside vendor, if you will, um, I feel like there's an incentive to up the cost because obviously you get a percentage of the cost. And as much work as the county has done with Architectus, I don't know if there's a more, um, flat rate. I, I don't know if it's typical.
And you know, on this project, because I didn't have a estimate for the construction cost, it was really hard to get a fixed fee, you know, associated with it. Because that's the way I've done it before, it was a fixed year percent. Given that I kind of had a general feeling of the range, I felt like twelve percent was the right number. Because we really didn't do other renovation, especially when you're looking at kitchens and bathrooms. And this one's kind of tricky too, because honestly, a considerable amount of fee is gonna be mechanical, electrical, plumbing. There might be IT above the ceiling, it's kind of messy. But what I could do is, you know, essentially I have a script we had, um, we've met, you know, in the past, but I think we need to get together and talk about it. If there is a budget, um, established in the project, I feel like it's in the range, it's very doable. Uh, I could, if you would like to give a fixed fee instead of a percent.
I just think a percent, a percentage tied to the amount always feels a little like a conflict. Um, and I'm not saying that that would be the intent going in, but, but certainly it feels like there's a conflict, uh, upping the construction cost and then, then the outside party kind of profits from that. And I see different agreements. Um, I've been, I've had my eye on that even with some of the city agreements, and I don't remember them using this type of structure. So I feel like there's other options out there that maybe we haven't asked about.
And that approach is not how we work either, but really it was going to be certain client, you know, what they want out of the project and finishes. We do an estimate, they will come up with different options and alternates, maybe to make their budget. Um, and so ultimately what our, is what we associate with is the... And so ultimately, what our fee is not being associated with is the construction cost at a good time. So, it really is whatever the market is, honestly, our percentage is based on that. I know what you're saying, though, I think there's a potential on some projects, I mean, ones that unlimited budget more likely, that kind of takes it for.
See you in two weeks, okay? All right, number twelve, all enforcement contracts to consider renovation, phase three advisory committee to award the contract, we had all enforcement contracts, we're the oldest.
Okay, we, as a purchasing agent, received four bids. Three of the parent low bidders were evaluated, and the committee is bringing to us this morning a recommendation to go with Western Builders Incorporated to, with a low base bid of thirteen million, fifteen thousand. So, John Hill is here to speak on behalf of the committee. Is there anything else? Also, the committee, you know, they have to say this recommendation.
Yeah, I have just a second. There's something that the county has been doing up late with its design services contracts, which I'm not familiar at all with what's being planned right now, but the incentive is actually then to, for every dollar you save, you draw the line at what you think the project's gonna cost, you set your flat base fee on that, and then as you save money on the project, and the architect, his pay actually goes up by saving the county money. So, that's where the incentive is in the agreement. It's not to see the price go up, rather, it's to, through value engineering, to see the cost go down. And for some of the major construction projects that the county's been involved with in the past ten years, particularly with this firm, that's where the incentive is banned. Save us money, we'll give you part of the savings, but the biggest beneficiary is part of the county.
But John, for me, I also see that a little bit in the gray area, because I see projects that are overinflated in terms of potential cost to come back and say, well, we saved X amount, instead of really kind of budgeting what we expected the project to be. So, I think either way, and I'm not saying that from a perspective of, I think there's ill intent, or I'm just trying to make sure that we are making it as easy as we can and being very transparent to those on the outside watching that. But I think even in that, an opposite of this rule where you play the budget, save the money.
You can game anything.
Yeah, so that's the one I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I think really, it's not, it's like what you're doing today. I mean, you have to pay mind to what's going on, and so there's a responsibility on the parties, on the county's side, to stay engaged all the way throughout the process, because you're helping to build the budget, as you help to build the budget for the project for about a month, okay? Now, Vicki just presented the bids to you as the purchasing agent. My role in the presentation is just to talk briefly about the work of the advisory committee and what they did in evaluating those three apparent low bids. Of course, we got four, but as we said in the project manual, the focus of attention when it comes to the evaluation process is gonna be three apparent low bidders. So, let me step through the agenda item, I believe, that you all have before you study. And this is just a snapshot summary of the bids. As Vicki pointed out, we had four bids, and had this been a shock, a blast, I'd say the pattern was pretty tight, because from low to top, there was about nine point nine five percent difference, and the other three bidders were within two percent of each other. So, that's a, that's a pretty good response. And the other item that I think, I think I heard you say, that he was that all four of the bids that came in were under the project estimate. So, that's good news for the county. So, as you're looking down that table that's on the first page, you see the base bid, all those negative numbers were the deducts that were in the bid document. So, if the county doesn't do its worth, you deduct this amount for that, for that body of work. Not much finer reason as you look across the, do a comparative glance across the paper and see how each factored in the deduct for that, but you know, it'll become a moot point if the county decides to accept the full base bid for the project from whoever awarded the project to. As you get to the bottom of the page, part of Vicki's purchasing responsibilities is to make sure the bids that come in are complete. At the time that this memo was put together, we did have planes, did have one missing piece from their bid document, but I believe that has since been submitted.
That's correct.
So, you can, whatever, where you see, no Larry, you can scratch through that, but yes, right there. As you get to the second page, and you look at, you can see an analysis or comparison of the charges that would be assessed for some contractor, contractor, many change orders that might occur during the, during the project, and there are some variations there that are somewhat interesting. And then finally, another element of the bid was how many days is it gonna take to complete the work, and why is that important? Well, Carrie, we're coming up on the first year anniversary of the bond, it's February now, and so the county basically has, per its, the terms of its bond agreement, you have two years to complete the work. So, time does become an issue when you're looking at how long is it gonna take to get all this work done. Ideally, you're gonna get it done within the performance period of your bonds, which is what we're looking at here. So, again, as you look down that list, you do some, do see some very, fairly drastic variations between the amount of time that was bid by the four bidders. Now, something that now where the advisory committee comes in is the document is pretty clear in stating that, you know, Texas state law says low to best bid, the price is not the only consideration as you're looking at this, because what the advisory committee's responsibility was, was to ascertain which bid would produce the best payment for the taxpayers of Potter County. So, they went through a fairly elaborate evaluation of those bids based on the information that was in the bid document. They reviewed the criteria that were pointed out in both the qualifications criteria of the project manual, and also the award criteria. Primarily, what they're looking at is the capabilities, is the capabilities of the bidder, both from an experience and competence standpoint, and also from a financial standpoint as well too. So, analysis were brought on all those factors. And so, as we progress through that rather lengthy memo that was sent to you, we start getting on to page three now. And so, we, in addition to looking at the background histories and experience of the key personnel, that would be writing the project for the contractor, the process of interviews done with owners of previous projects that each of these bidders have put on, as well as their architects, and so there was an array of standard questions that were asked of each of those. And so, as you look in the center of the third page of that memory, you see the summary of both the assessment of the key personnel and of the interviews that were conducted with the architects and with the owners of past projects. So, all that said, the evaluation information that was actually developed separately by different members, groups of members of the advisory committee, were brought together on the seventeenth of this month. Before the entire committee, there was much discussion, much evaluation, and as they worked through that process, we considered not only the money, but the values of the taxpayers, the committee developed the recommendation to award the bid to Western Builders. And as Vicki pointed out, that was a unanimous decision on behalf of the advisory committee to make that recommendation. Now, that's not the low bid. That's the second low bid, it's a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars higher than the low bid. So, by state law, the low bid, the low bidder, which in this case is Plains Builders, has the opportunity to come to the court and provide whatever additional information they may have. So, we haven't really scripted this discussion, but I think, Judge, with your permission in court, I think it might be appropriate if Mr. Kenny were to come to the podium, if you'd like to, sir.
Sure.
And speak on behalf of their bid. I think it would also be, when Mr. Kenny has delivered his presentation, to hear from other key members of the advisory committee, as they talk a little bit more in depth about what they found was part of their analysis. So, sir, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Detective. I'm here to submit some evidence against the recommendation to provide Western, to select Western Builders as the contractor. As it's been discussed already, there's a few items of evidence that I'd like to present. I believe we gave everyone a packet this morning, maybe showed up. But there's a couple of concerns that I'd like to address, and one of those being the fact that this project, I mean, the advisory committee has selected to use Western to spend two hundred thousand dollars more over our company. I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that as a Potter County taxpayer. I don't, I don't agree with that as any kind of taxpayer to do that, when I feel like that our company is just as qualified as Western Builders to complete this project. I feel like there are some issues that were brought up during the evaluation process that I'd like to address. I don't know if y'all were given the entire book of information that Vicki provided us that showed exactly how all the evaluation was done by the committee, but I'd like to address a few things that were on, that were in that, that was in that information. The first thing is our impact on the local community. The way it was evaluated, when we were required to submit our bid, we were asked to submit a list of our subcontractors, and the list of our subcontractors was our primary subcontractors, the larger subcontractors. We didn't give a complete breakdown of every single subcontractor that we were going to use. And so, what I've done is, is I think the second or the third page is the schedule of values, and that gives you a breakdown, a complete breakdown of our bid, showing what subcontractors we're using and which are local and which are out of state. The, one of the things that we were rated lower on is than Western Builders is that we were not using local subcontractors, and if you look at that schedule of values, we're using ninety percent of our subcontractors are local subcontractors. Okay, and only ten percent of the subcontractors that we'll be using on this project will be from out of the area. And I think that that's important, I think that's important not only for the city of Maramo of Potter County, to make sure that most of that money stays here within this local area. I think it's also interesting in comparing Western Builders' information to our information in the data, based on what was given by Mrs. Shelton, was eighty percent of the subcontractors that were listed on this project, we're using the same sub. And I mean, we're using the exact same subs on eighty percent of the work that's being done on this project. And so, it's, then what it falls to is, is it falls to us as a general contractor to make sure that those subcontractors are doing the quality of work and performing the work that we expect them to do on a timely basis. But you're, we're using eighty percent of the same people to do the same work. So, why do you spend two hundred thousand dollars extra to use eighty percent of the same subcontractors is surprising to me. And, and, and it just, I think that, I think that the information from this, that we're using the same subcontractors is very important as far as being able to evaluate the quality of work that you're gonna get on the project. The next thing that was in this, in the package, and I'm just going down the list that it was presented to me by, in the evaluation process, was the current financial condition. If you look at the memorandum, it ranks us as, Western Builders is first and us is second on the current financial condition, but on the current financial information that we were provided by the county, we were, we were ranked as best on their evaluation criteria on two of the four items. And so, I don't understand how, if we were ranked as best over West, I mean, we were ranked over Western Builders on two of the four, and they were ranked over two of the four, then how did they, how were they ranked as first on, on the financial evaluation, and we were ranked as second on the financial evaluation? The only thing that I can see on that, on that financial evaluation that might make a difference is there was a calculation at the bottom that was calculating current assets over current liabilities, okay? Our percentage was higher than Western Builders, but the problem is, is that that calculation doesn't take into account long-term debt. We don't have any long-term debt. All of our purchases are made by cash, all of our equipment is owed by us, we don't have a single bit of long-term debt for our company, we're completely liquid. And so, that allows us to be a lot more responsive as far as from a financial position than I think anybody that has a lot of long-term debt. And, and there was no way to tell whether Western had long-term debt, it just, based on the C A over C A, C L evaluation, their percentage leads me to believe that they had some long-term debt that was helping the financial company. Well, we don't have any long-term debt. So, as far as the financial condition is concerned, I believe that we're just as financially capable, if not more, because we're completely liquid to do, to run this project. And, and that concern, the reason that they had that concern was because they wanted to know whether we would be able to fund the project based on whether Potter County was, the way it was described is, is as if y'all were late in making payments on the project. Well, I don't anticipate that being a factor, and so I'm not real sure why that was even included in the calculations as to, as to why we had to be financially stable enough to fund the project on a month-to-month basis, but that was one of the calculations that was on there. And, and as they suggest, as they mentioned, we've included in this packet a letter from our CPA. It was a, it was a simple letter saying that, that we, it was the first page, I think, of the, or, I'm sorry, it was the fourth page of the, of the information. All it is, is just a simple letter from our CPA that was requested, that said that we are capable financially to do the project. I mean, that was, we just did not include that in our original bid packet. The next item I'd like to address is key personnel. That was one of the evaluations that was, that was ranked by the committee. I don't really have any other way to say it, and I think it's interesting to note that Western Builders in the ranking, Western Builders, all of Western Builders' key personnel are ranked five, except for one ranking double four. And all of the other rankings for all of the other subcontractors, us and A and S included, are not ranked anywhere near that. Now, I'm not real sure where those rankings came from, but I find it, I find it interesting that one company is perfect where the other companies are not perfect. I mean, and so, I don't know if there was some bias in the way that that was ranked. I'm not sure how that ranking was done, but it's, it's like, their superintendent has forty-three years' worth of experience, ours has thirty-three years' worth of experience. At some point, I mean, at some point, whether you have thirty-three or forty-three years of experience, you have the experience necessary to build this project. You know, I mean, it wasn't like we submitted a superintendent that only had ten years' experience and had never done projects of this size or scope before. I mean, he has thirty-three years' worth of experience, and he's done work, I mean, at Pantex and, and all over the place on projects of this size and scope, but he was ranked as a two and a half on his ranking, where Western Builders with forty-three years' worth of experience was ranked as a five. I just don't, I don't, that seems an unnecessary disparity to me when you're looking at that. And when you look at the project manager, our project manager that we submitted was one of the owners, was my brother, Dan Kettie. I mean, I don't know what kind of a better project manager y'all would want than one of the actual owners of our company. We have him, and we've submitted in the packet, there's a resume for Raymond Boynton. If, if it's necessary that we have a different super project manager, we can certainly use Raymond Boynton. He's one of my employees, he's Dan's employee, he's gonna answer to Dan. He's obviously done a few more, he worked for Western for twenty-eight years, in fact, and according to Raymond, I mean, he was, he was there when, when Lowman Pham, who is Western Builders' project manager, came to work for them and helped train Lowman Pham at Western Builders. So, if it's necessary that we change project managers, we can change project managers, but I would think that y'all would want to know, looking over your project. but I would think that y'all would want an owner looking over your project more than you'd want an employee looking over your project. But that's just, that was our opinion, and obviously, but again, Dan was ranked as a two and a half, and Lowman Pham was ranked as a five and a four. I can't, I'm having trouble with accepting that significant imbalance in the ranking process in the way this was done. And so I would just like for y'all to consider if it's a process of changing a different project manager, we can certainly change to a different project manager and provide y'all with a project manager that, that has 30 years' worth of experience and has done, and y'all can see on his resume, has done multiple, multiple large projects. The next item that I would like to talk about is the reputation and the quality of services. Again, if you go back to the rankings that we were provided with by Mrs. Shelton, if you look at those, every single ranking for Western Builders is a five, every single one. The comments are exceptional, exceptional, would never use anybody else, things like that. Then you get down to the other two bidders, and you're getting fours and threes and two and a halves and, and things like that. I also, there's just such a significant disparity between the way those rankings were done. It leads, I don't know, I can't understand as to why those rankings were so significantly different. We also, we, one of the things specifically that kind of surprised us is, is on the rankings sheet, it says that they talked to a school about Plains Builders, and the school had said that we were three weeks late in our completion date and had some issues. Well, the only school that I put on my, on my previous projects list was Wheeler Independent School District. I contacted Wheeler Independent School District, they were never contacted. So I, I'm not even, I'm not even sure who, we contacted a number of the people that we put on our previous projects list, and we only found one that was contacted by the county. And so I'm curious as to, are they, are they talking to people that were Western Builders' recommendation list and then just ask them what they thought about us? Because if that's the case, that's kind of an unfair process. I mean, call my recommendations list, because I'm going to give you people that are going to recommend me, of course, I mean, that's what it's for, and ask them what they think about Western Builders. I mean, and then you're going to get a disparity from the other side. And so I'm just having, we put a list of additional references in there that y'all could call, we'd like for y'all to call them and, and talk to them. I mean, we got Mayor, Mayor Paul Harfield, we've done work for him, Bishop Zurich, Randy Sharp with Mason, Mason Park, Dr. Constancio, and I forget the fifth one that's on that list.
Ascension Academy.
Ascension Academy, Dr. Shavill at Ascension Academy. There's some additional contacts that y'all can contact that will give us a recommendation on what we've done for them and the projects that we've done for them. I mean, and I just, I feel like in looking through the very specific documentation, that there was a predetermined bias where bigger is better, and I don't agree with that. I don't agree with it bigger is better. I, I believe that Plains Builders has the capability and the knowledge and the personnel to build this facility, and especially for $200,000 less, I think it's important that that's considered, because even when, I forget the gentleman's name that was up here before me, but even when he was talking about days, if you look at the days that were on there, the county set a value for the days, they kept setting a value of $500 per day for the days. Well, if you take that into account, the difference in our days and Western Builders' days, it's only $30,000, based on the liquidated damages clause that y'all had in your specification. That still puts me $160,000 low. If that has a value, if that even has a value, it still puts me $160,000 low. And so in conclusion, really, what we're asking is, is, is we're asking that y'all reevaluate the unconsidered financial capabilities of Plains, based on the long-term debt, the financial liquidity, realizing that Plains Builders has the best financial capabilities for the project. We ask you to review the evaluations for quality and responsiveness to ultimately realize that there was some predetermined bias in the rankings while contacting the additional references that we provided. We ask you y'all to consider us using Raymond Boynton as our superintendent, I mean, as our project manager. If Dan Kettin is unacceptable to y'all, or if y'all feel like Dan Kettin is, is, needs the additional help from Raymond. And then our final vote really is that the court will table the recommendation of Western Builders for this project, reevaluate the bid recommendations, and find that Plains Builders has the lowest and best bid, based on me $200,000 or $195,000 low. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Is there any, any other also on the committee? I have to.
Yeah, I would like to address one thing. I observed the process, I didn't participate in the process. I don't think there was any predetermination going on. I think it was probably about as fair and transparent evaluation based on the information that the county had received in the bid documents and based on the criteria that was published in the project manual. And by no means is any of this intended to disparage one company or another here. I mean, these were all good, four, four good bids from four good companies. The committee simply looked at what they thought was going to be the lowest and best bid for the county, based on all the criteria that had been published. Now, I certainly empathize with the concerns that Mr. Kettin just expressed, but I don't want to get him away in, you know, thinking that this was somehow, that the fix was him to use a Trumpism. It was, it was a clean evaluation process, and that was one thing that I think every committee member kept in mind, in mind, as they were going through the process, at least what I saw, could seem to their hearts, but I saw what they were doing around the table. And I think they were trying to do their left best to make a decision based on the information that had been obtained at the time. So, you know, take that for what it's worth, but I don't think that there was any bias or, you know, preconceived notions going into the process. I think the county was happy to get four good bids on this project, and they were good bids, but I think they, you know, before they started popping the courts and letting confetti fly, when the bids were open, they took a step back and said, let's evaluate these first and see which one we think is going to be in the best interest of the county. And that's basically what the recommendation represents today. So I don't, I don't know if you need to hear from any of the other committee members, and we're not, you know, we're not up here trying to disparage anybody, but you need as much good information at hand before you make a decision. So I don't know if it would be worth your while to hear from some of the other key members that participated in that evaluation process or not, but here's your opportunity if you'd like.
Well, I'm on that committee, and I will tell you that my evaluation was that it was not taken lightly, that's for sure. We spent hours, hours and hours on this project, on the bid process, and we were very pleased with the four minutes. And we, when we sat down to look at them, we went step by step, inch by inch, over every piece of every company. And we based it on the qualifications, evaluation from key personnel, evaluation criteria from past experience. We, that's what we did, and we did it diligently. And I have to say, it wasn't unanimous, and there was no corroboration, there was no, no, what was the term we used, favoritism involved from anything else. So I just, I just knew it was a mobbing and destruction.
Well, I have to say, Judge, certainly I would echo, I don't, I wouldn't expect that there would be any biases going in, but I think that brings up very valid points, Mr. Kettin does, especially the three key components, the impact on the local community, current financial condition, and key personnel. I personally think it's refreshing that someone is looking at that to that amount of detail, and the fact that what they brought to the table was a lower bid. I think it's refreshing that someone is looking at that and coming to these court sessions that are not easy to sit through, for sure. And I think we have an opportunity on the table to really look at the process, which I know Commissioner Vaughn is something you've questioned for several years. I wouldn't be opposed to asking the committee to go back and, with the additional information, and complete another evaluation with these top two. And I'm not sure legally, Todd, what that process is like, but certainly it's within our jurisdiction, because what the recommendation is not the lowest bid that they have the opportunity to present before the commissioner's court, which obviously was just completed. I would recommend that you go back and take another look at it. I'm not sure, is that within our purview? I guess that's my question, is that within our purview to do as a commissioner's court?
The court can reject all bids that are going over. That means start over with the bidding and everything else.
Which I think would be a real mistake. I'd like to hear from, if I had been sitting on this committee, heard the report, I'd want to get up and speak. If I was Western Builders and heard that report, I'd want to get up and speak. I don't think it's a fair process, right, the way it's been so far this morning. I'd like to know why the total bid was not complete in the first place. What's the reason? Is that an indication of the way things were happening, in the way the building would be? And I think there are some reasons if this committee had made this recommendation, and I want to hear some of those things.
It comes out of the committee, and I think the judge has not seen my limitations.
And I want to mention, as purchasing agent, I saw the committee at work, and it's very important to know that it was independently done. It was very, very precise of what everyone did. It was $2 of deliberation diligence before we began.
Can you, can you give us just a quick list of that process, how it worked, just a quick round for independence, for the independent process?
I think John, he actually said that.
Yeah, I mean, we, there were folks on that committee that have expertise in certain areas, likes, expertise in construction, its construction knowledge, and almost 30 years of work with the construction trade, and had the power of county, more or less, somewhat of a generalization. Carrie has great financial background, and she helped us look at the financial implications. Why is that important to be able to cash flow the project? Because you get a, you get a invoice at the end of the month. You don't pay it immediately. You have to go through, Mike has to take a week to go through and make sure that all the inventory claims on that invoice is on site, that all the work that's claimed that was done the previous month has been done to the percentage of completion claimed by the contractor. So it's not, you get it in the morning, pay it after the day. There's a process that you have to go through in order to certify that reimbursement request before you can pay it, to make sure you're actually paying for work, that all the materials are on site, or that they're actually, the materials have been tested, that they are the materials that are supposed to be used as part of that construction. Larry Percy contacted the previous owners and the previous architects, and again, we had, we had standardized questions that were asked of everybody that was interviewed. So, you know, it was pretty sterile as far as the interview process went, because it was, okay, now I have a question too, nothing in between, we're just going to go same questions of everybody. Everybody gets asked the same questions. So that information was pulled together, and of course, Vicki and Matt were the ones that were responsible for making sure that everything that, because there are several different places that listed in the, in the, in the project manual what constitutes complete bid. So they went through to make sure that everything that needed to be in the, was there, so it could be certified as being complete. To your question, if they didn't have two years of audit, you know, two years of certified audits, if they didn't have a second year audit, and they have to have a letter from their CPA saying, yeah, they can cash flow the, or they can, they can run the project without having to rely, Potter County paying them on the 31st day to keep the, keep the project running, because that's really not going to be realistic when you consider everything you have to go through, when you're going to verify that invoice for payment.
Can I, John, interject? Again, and it did that that very question was brought up, if that was necessary. It was necessary, and it was assigned, it did that all the other vendors were responsive and entered in that information in compliance. I think that's very important. Yes, it seems simple that it was very, very spelled out and did that needed to be part of the package.
So it was, overall, it was a very challenging process, because these, these were good bids, and they're good companies, and they're companies that I'm assuming that if they work with them on this project, on our future project, that the county's going to work with in the future. Because, you know, they're, they're, none of this, as I said, is intended to be a criticism of any of the other bidders. This is just having done the work, having looked at all the factors, having spent a good deal of time evaluating this as the recommendation, but I'm blathering, I think I need to turn this over to Mike, if you can give him more details.
Gentlemen, I'd like to say something, both of you, both of your companies, looking at the subcontractor list, I'm the one that has worked with many of these through the past years. I have problems with both of your subcontractors, not just one or the other. So y'all are on equal basis, right, on this issue? If you're selected, if you're selected, I'll be coming to you to change some contracts, so that I will not worry. Let's go back to the key personnel issue, and I'll evaluate that. I made contacts as well. People that I know, I contacted them, have done work with this company, like John said, this was not just a situation where we sat down and put down the score. We did a lot of work on this. We went through, did a lot of research, checking references, and I am not here today to bash Plains or Western Builders, that they don't need to have them today. The information that was given right here on the rankings for which I looked at the project manager, the superintendent, those are two people that I've got to live with for the next year. And those are people, if they're, if I don't feel good in my heart about them, then I'm not going to recommend them. And based off of information passed on to me by other people throughout this Texas Panhandle, that I've checked the references and stuff like that, I made those rankings based on that. There's nothing against any one of these gentlemen that they had submitted on their bids. Let me share something with the commissioner's court, county forecaster. It has nothing to do with these two gentlemen, these two companies out here. We had five bids. Out of those five bids, the company that was selected was the middle one. You know, we had two other people, two other companies' lowest bid, they could have come up. As a committee at that point, we had seen reasoning not to select those two lower than that. So everything that we do as a committee right here is in the best interest. It's not that we're just out here because we like somebody better or this, to meet it all on an equal basis.
Well, I think it's a great problem to have, you know, Judge, we have two qualified entities at the table willing and responding to work at Potter County, both qualified in their own right. So I think that is, again, very refreshing for what Potter County is bringing to the market. But I do, will echo that I think that those are very valid concerns, and I don't think it's going to hurt us to go back and open the bid process again. This is something that has caused us pause the process even before this came on the table. Now, sometimes what I see as a roadblock, whether this is fair or not, by the time this gets presented to the court, it's, we don't have any more time, you're going to, you're going to affect the project 60 days, 90 days, we won't meet the two-year. Well, that's not fair to the court, that by the time we get this agenda item, then the roadblock potentially is, well, now you're out of time, and now you're affecting other things. So it's not fair to have governance in the statute that allows the commissioner's court to have purview over it, but then... to have purview over it, but then have internal roadblocks to not do anything with it.
Question. Uh, I'm taking into account what you said, and I'm terrible at a lot of that, but if you're asking for this court to help process review and massage and vet the process that our advisory committee has already given us, what, what is that going to look like? And what, um, I mean, and what are we looking for ahead? We're not SMEs. And so we rely upon our, our subject matter experts, who beautifully, qualified talent, do that work for us. Uh, and if they're bringing back all of that, uh, information and it's unanimous, I'm, I just want to look at the pathway that you're discussing, your, your question. How are we going to, and what are we looking for, given more than what the other side are going to be?
Well, I think that's a very valid question, Commissioner, and to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we become the subject matter experts. What I'm recommending or requesting is that that go back to the committee to truly do that and vet that, and they still be a part of the process. But what I can tell you is that we have two local entities that are great entities in their own right. And one has responded as the lowest invest bidder, that did not get the recommendation. Both entities have taken time to come to the Commissioners' Court and bring up very valid concerns. And as a taxpayer on the other end, we then have to justify what our decision is. And so if someone were to ask me, Commissioner, how did you vote in favor of this when you have a lowest invest, or lowest, let me say that, let me be clear with my language, a lowest bidder coming with these concerns, how do you not, how do you justify not going back to the process? So where my discussions come from, Commissioner, is that I think they're very valid concerns. I think they're both great entities and I don't think it's going to hurt us to at least go back and not go back to the committee. I'm not saying that I'm recommending that we override the committee's recommendation that is unanimous, but I am saying that there are very valid concerns as a low bidder and both that have vested stakes in the local community to go back and look at it.
But this court, this court gave this committee the authority to do that and that's what this committee did. Unanimously, they voted to give it to Western Builders. And now you're asking that they go back and look at it again? And you're going to come up with the very same answer?
Well, I don't know that. I guess I can ask.
I agree with the judge. I'd like to talk to the judge. I agree with the judge. We've asked the committee to approve it and we have hired people to, to be in our eyes and ears and do this work. Who would ever want to work for us if we always turn around and say, "I give it back that we don't like that"? We have to appreciate our, our advisory committees, our people that work for us and trust them. And I think that we have to move ahead. I think if we throw it back, it won't hurt us, it'll hurt our committee and it'll always hurt our advisory committees from here on.
I served as advisory committee for this project. Unfortunately, I wasn't there for the vote for personal reasons. However, as a member of that committee, we are very diligent in what we try to do in, uh, selecting, uh, this process and I, I have to disagree with the committee that we need to go back to the committee. Unfortunately, there was a, a problem with one of the papers not being turned in, that was not the reason for the selection, so.
I have one question that's been bothering here, that this is what I'm referring to in the meeting. Uh, it, it, uh, references the, the time difference in work weeks. It adds up plus seventeen, twenty-seven weeks. That, that's over the low, lowest bidder. That's over A and S's bid. A and S bid three hundred and sixty-five days. So when you're looking at that list, it's, it's weeks over the lowest amount of time bid by one of those four bidders, which have to be A and S.
And Commissioner, I should respond to a, a couple of comments. Um, when, I, I certainly can't speak for the court, when I have my vote to allow the committee to go back and evaluate, certainly this comes back to the governing body to discern that. And so we are elected by the taxpayers to do that. And I think we very rarely go back and say, "No, we're not going to do that." So I would agree with you, if we had a pace or a tempo where we did that often, I would agree with you. That would be an item of concern if everything that was recommended, we turned back and said, "That doesn't meet our criteria." But that is very rare, which is why I, again, would echo that it's refreshing that someone is questioning the process.
I think questioning is fine, it's just, why do we have to always string every decision out until we beat a dead horse until there's nothing left of it? And then the decision isn't going to be any different. Um, I, I just get frustrated because we drag our feet so much up here on this diocese that we can't make a decision, we table it, we got to do this, we got it. And, um, it's frustrating that we can't move ahead and we, we see some deadlines coming as far as our bond is concerned and all that. And I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the contract for the Potter County Land Enforcement Complex, award that to Western Builders of Amarelo, uh, based on our advisory advisory committee's recommendation.
Question, Brian, just a, um, I'm in line.
Let's go ahead and get a second, then you can, we'll get a second on that, and then you can, is there, no?
And I'm, and I'm ordered to give a last question, so I have a second. I'm in line.
Robert, true support, if you have to have a second.
Second?
I'll say.
Okay, now.
Question. Um, I appreciate the, Commissioner, he is, uh, told, of course, this court, the profound passion of, uh, ensuring that all the items that are due are lost. And I can appreciate that as far as, uh, being official stewards of the county. And, uh, that's what we're here for. And if it takes, uh, an elongated time, that's what we're here for. So I, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, I would ask, though, from an advisory, uh, committee question as far as, if we decided to throw this back to the advisory. Uh, and I have heard, and I don't know if there's anyone else on the advisory committee that's, who'd like to speak to this, uh, to hear what their thoughts would be in this process of possibly coming out with a, a differing opinion than what was, uh, in this court. Just as a matter of, of course, if there's, what I would say, and we vote by plain deals, and what the committee does as far as, is there something that is out there that could change opinions and what we have to be there with?
I think it's important to say that I think the committee did due diligence in looking over these bids with a non-responsive, a financial inconsistency. That everyone else completed their bids to the utmost completeness and that we gave them more than enough opportunity by reviewing that information, that's not something that we would have required to do.
Given, given the votes, and also the claims, is there something out there that we may have missed that we'd like to, to go over and massage differently from what was presented towards, or you, uh, confident in the recommendation?
I'm very confident in mine, and I was just going to add to Vicki's. I felt very shocked that the claims should have been held non-responsive, because the identity did say that the CPX shall be submitted, and it was not, but the committee as a whole wanted to go ahead and submit the evaluation.
Is there anyone else on the advisory committee that, that has said that hadn't spoken?
First of all, can you make it clear, I didn't participate in the decision because I was there as a lawyer. Uh, and that would be what I would be standing in front of you now, uh, in that role. And that is, if you're going to kick it back to the committee, you need to do two things. Number one, you need to identify the deficiency of what the, what the committee did or didn't do is, and instruct them specifically what you want them to do. If it's simply a matter of discomfort with the ultimate recommendation, that's a policy decision for the Commissioners' Court. Uh, the committee, the committee has spoken and spoken unanimously. If you see a problem with what the committee did, you need to identify that specifically and give them instructions on how to rectify that.
And those would be the three components that were addressed at the beginning of the process, the, uh, issues with the scoring criteria on local community impact, financial condition and key personnel. Those, I'm assuming in that scenario, those would be the drivers.
Well, community impact was, you know, the first of the things on that evaluation is on the award bid, are those, those things that are called out specifically in chapter two sixty-two, check, two sixty-two also says other things that are relevant to the bid. Uh, in this case, uh, the DVE participation.
What does that mean?
Is this advantage, business enterprise, lots of DVEs that's what they're, because you're also required to, as a, as a county, you're required to encourage the use of DVEs of that, but these were minor, these were like the minor profits of the line, you know? They, they were, they were only considered in the event that it was a close bid. Uh, now, both, you know, both bidders, both of the two bidders that are on consideration right now are going to be spending a predominant portion of their, their funds with local contractors. That's good news for both of you. Uh, you know, what you see in your memo today was just a summation of what was provided in the bid. So I can't read the bidder's lines either, if there's somebody that's providing doorknobs or, you know, faucets and stuff like that, that we're not aware of that were called out in bid. We can't, we can't consider that. But, you know, we, we just basically tally the information that they presented in their bids to come up with one providing, you know, nearly seventy percent, and now that number's gone up to, I don't know, it's been getting, right? And perhaps the same could be said of Western too, because there may have been some minor subs there that we consider. So those really aren't the, 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 the critical, the DVE and the, you know, the participation in, I mean, the minimum participation were just kind of minor things, most critical things that keep in mind. And I think the most critical things that the committee kept in mind, as I watched them go through their work, was the qualifications of the bid, the past performance on projects. And yes, uh, all the, all the owners and architects of, for each one of those bidders were for projects that that bidder had worked on in the past. So I wasn't, it wasn't like, well, it's, you know, let's just take that one project and call it something else. I mean, they were, there was, so, uh, the investigation, the background was extremely thorough. And, uh, and again, it was extremely fair too, since it wasn't like, you know, the, the questions were, there was a process that was established, we're going to ask, ask this question, this question, this question, this question, and if he's, "Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it." And then, you know, but those, but the people that are going to be talking. So, I mean, those, the, the most critical thing is, price is always going to be extremely important within qualifications, because you never know until you get into the project what the final cost is going to be and what that relationship's going to look like after you sign the contract. That's, that's what they, they tried to look at through their evaluation process, is can we work one fast to minimize maybe the additional costs as we go through this project, to be as efficient as we possibly can with taxpayer money to get the best project we can to serve the long-term needs of the county as far as, as far as those guys. That was it. If you, my opinion no matter, because I'm just a scribe, but if you, if you want my opinion, if you were to throw this back to the committee again, there would be...
Would be no time, I'm sure.
Well, no.
There never is time.
No, nothing to do with time. I hadn't heard anything here today, and that would sway.
Given, given what I've, I'm ready for that question. It's given what I'm ready to say, but I, I think as far as the contractors or contractors that, from, from a local perspective, pretty much mirror the form, there's a, a much difference. And I haven't heard anything really pointing that really could push back.
Well, I think key personnel was an item that was identified, and certainly I don't have any stake in the game, Commissioner, and I'm not a member of this committee, so I know it pains the Commissioners' Court when I ask lots of questions. I try to not do that, but I am not a member of the committee and I do absolutely hold responsibility to our taxpayers. That's not just election time. Um, so I, I apologize in advance to the Commissioners' Court, but, but I think key personnel was another component.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All favor. Please bring it. Okay, that's your floor. Thank you, everybody. Okay, number thirteen, Potter County projects. Anything you think, Mike?
Nothing.
The employment items, the elections department who discharged the end of elections of Juan Pacheco as temporary deputy clerk effective November eighth, twenty sixteen, resignation of Kathy Bensel as part-time deputy clerk effective November eleventh, and the hiring of Ingrid Riles as temporary clerk to catch upon, to catch up on the reelection, um, all those from the elections department. And Rodenbridge, the resignation of Brandon Thompson as maintenance mechanic effective November seventeenth, twenty sixteen. Any other motions?
I move that we set the employment items as presented.
Judge.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Um, zero. Jail report today was five hundred and forty-nine people in our jail, eighty-four of those were females, six of those were offenders. And we will be getting those back today, is that correct? Maybe tomorrow? And then, uh, the percentage of felons is eighty-three percent to eleven percent of these defendants.
Yes. But I did hear back from Mr. Allison while we were in session, and he does plan on being president December fourth, that he will be here, he has just been banned, so I'll work with your office to get an agenda item on him. And I respect those circumstances as part of that program.
I would, uh, I would request that the committee have an opportunity again to meet with, uh, personnel as far as to say that they can do it.
I'd request that of him as well, so I, I've got confirmation on that. And then just a quick update to the Commissioners. Jason and Shannon and I are going to meet this Friday to talk about including the backup and the electronic form of our agenda, if I had the, the previous agenda item. So there's no action, but I wanted to give you an update, we're meeting this Friday, so that may be in the future.
I think, uh, the issue, I think, was more to the strategic planning process on the process, the process of how it's going to be better, given what the, because as a, you know, the top of the decision.
We did also get a draft agreement from TAD on the fairgrounds, um, agreement for the insurance, if I remember correctly. So I, I just saw it come through, I haven't reviewed it, but I'm hoping to have that.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We're on track.